Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November regular school committee meeting here on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the middle high school library. If you could please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hearing your business, if anybody would like to address the committee, I just ask you come to the mic and please state your name and address for the records. Okay, thank you. First order of business is our approval of the minutes from our last meeting in October. Ask the committee if they get a chance to review. I look for a motion and a second to approve or amend if you see anything that needs to be changed. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those are approved. Thank you. First order of business, our reported assistant superintendent, Dr. Boss, but I think we're just gonna go right, just go right to Mr. Scott, the history and business department update head, for the department head for history and business.
Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and speak to you all. I'll take you through the presentation now, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions along the way as they're relevant or at the end, whatever works best for you all. So, I'll open up first with kind of progress on the areas from growth from last year's presentation. So, we had three main things that we were working on, the world history curriculum, meeting the needs better for English language learners, and supporting students and meeting deadlines. So, the, in terms of the world history curriculum, where that stands is, this is complete and in place. So, this curriculum is the lived curriculum now for world history. We finished that last year through a combination of professional development and common planning time in the Wave Week Wednesdays, and that is now in place for all the grade nine students in all the world history classes. In terms of English language learner needs, this is, the way I see it, it's an ongoing need for the department and the building at large, and so this is something that we worked on last year with district-wide PD for English language learner training, and we're applying those lessons and going to continue to work on that as we go forward, which you'll see on the next slide as well. And then supporting students meeting deadlines, this is something that is now a common expectation in the department, and it's been widely successful. Obviously, some students still need motivation from time to time to get work in, but having consequences for not turning work in on time is, has been effective for students so far. So, that's kind of revisiting the things from last year. I'll, I'm happy to speak to this in any more detail if people have questions before I go on. Great. So, areas for growth this year and moving forward. So, English language learner, I think that goal is relevant and important enough that it should continue on, so we're gonna continue working with that. And then we are also working this year on exploring alternative grading methods. So, this is in line with a building goal through Principal Bourne of looking at, we're reading the book, Grading for Equity as a School, and so this is something the history and business department is looking to apply to all of our classes as well. So, whether that be looking at four-point grading scales instead of a zero to 100 scale for more equitable grading, opportunities for revisions and reduces, things like that. And so, these are some of the things that the department is exploring. So, we're doing that again, like I said, as a whole building, but we think it has enough value and people are curious and motivated enough to look at this in our own department time as well. So, this is something we've had, you know, I've been doing these kind of things for a few years and a few other, one other teacher in the department has as well, as well as a handful of other teachers in the school. And now that it's a building-wide focus, that smaller group of us is kind of taking the lead to, to see what, how we can apply this for the department at large. So, our goal ultimately is to have similar expectations department-wide, so that students are not, A, I think, confused, or can get different interpretations from year to year. We want kind of a consistent grading scale from grade nine through 12, and then also, just so that it doesn't, you know, have one teacher playing against another teacher or something, or stu-, you know, potentially community members or parents playing one teacher against another. So, having common expectations is something we're working to, but we're not at that point yet. So, that'll be a focus for professional development and, and common planning time as well. Any questions on these two priority areas for our department? I'm happy to revisit it too as we go along. Alright, great. So, one of the things that I prepared for tonight is to kind of give you a sense of something that we would do in the history department on a day-to-day basis. I'm gonna give you one sort handout as well, as if you were my students, so if you would be, play along if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. So... Something that we spend a lot of time in the history department doing is primary source analysis. And this would be a document that's used in our US History II curriculum, the junior year class. And I've kind of set it up like we would if this were a typical lesson plan in my classroom. So, we've got an essential question. So, what were the causes and consequences of anti-immigration sentiment in the late 19th and early 20th century? And then we may also consider things like what connections can be made outside of that time period specifically. So, we would have looked at this document in the late 18, early 1900s when we were studying this time period, but again, as I'll kind of make reference as we go on, this is a document that, that I think stands out to the students, it has particular impact, but can be applied to and speak to other periods. So, one of the first things whenever we take a document is I would ask students to just take a minute or two to just kind of look at the document and see what jumps out to you. So, first impressions. As you kind of see on here with Analyze the Cartoon, meet the cartoon. So, I'll give you a minute or two to just kind of see what catches your eye. Alright, and so, given the smaller class size, right, this would be nice to teach, you know, six or seven people. I don't think we need to raise hands, so, but just from initial reactions or first glance, what are some things that jump out to you from the cartoon?
The shadows do not match the characters in front of them.
Okay, do you think that was intentional or accidental?
Oh, 100% intentional.
Okay. Other observations from the cartoon?
They're all men.
Okay.
They don't look happy on the ones facing us.
I didn't hear the second thing you said, sorry.
They don't look happy, the ones that are facing, what I presume to be a boat or...
Not a whole lot of diversity either.
Nope. So, interesting you'd say that, right, because you could argue that diversity in terms of ethnic background potentially is there, but racial diversity certainly not, right?
Correct.
Yep.
And the manner of dress, they all look rather comfortable.
Hmm, yeah, fairly wealthy, right? One of the things that students always get a kick out of is like, what's a way that a cartoonist, or do any of you know a way that a cartoonist can portray wealth in cartoon characters?
Weight?
Yeah, the fatter the person is, the richer they are, right? And so, again, these are cartoons, so the artist is obviously doing something with intention in there. Other, anything else that stands out, or any initial questions, things that pique your curiosity?
Heidi stole my answer.
Okay, good. Hey, that's okay.
I find, sorry, the person that's walking toward them, his left hand behind his back just makes me wonder, it just feels like there's something like hidden back there.
Yeah.
So, curious about that.
So, certainly could, like, what could that, if that was, if he was trying to portray some kind of sneakiness or something like that, what, what could potentially be the intention with that from an artist or from an author like this?
Trying to hide something valuable, maybe?
Maybe, sure.
That they're gonna take it.
And the person to the right, who looks significantly younger than perhaps the rest, is he raising his hand in question, or is he raising his hand in protest?
So, all five, or they, I think one, the kind of, the fattest guy in the greenish coat has neither hand up, but they're all, their hands are essentially doing this, yeah. You could argue that one of the fears that the public had was that immigrants would potentially bring crime, or would be, you know, somehow dangerous to American society, although do we get the sense immediately that this is an anti-immigrant perspective?
It's not until you really examine the shadows to realize that the shadows are representing people who potentially live in poverty.
Okay. I think the shadows represent something else, though.
Their backgrounds, they're all...
Their, their fears even.
They were all immigrants themselves?
They were all immigrants themselves at one time. So, these are shadows of their past or their ancestors. And so, now that they're established Americans, what's their stance? What's their perspective? No more immigrants.
No more.
No more immigrants, right? But the perspective of the cartoonists, well, you were once an immigrant, right? And so, the, if the shadows were there by themselves, they would certainly represent the potential, maybe your, like, say the, the modern-day characters are gone and it's just the shadows. Maybe the cartoonist could say something, arguing that, you know, this, the person maybe thinks they're gonna be accessing the American dream, but maybe it isn't quite that case. Like, you referenced poverty and things like that. That was certainly a common condition for immigrants once they came to America. But, in this case, it's, I think the author is, you know, what would be words that would come to your mind of like, what kind of emotion do you think the author is trying to pull out of the audience that's consuming this? In Puck Magazine, which would be kind of like a modern-day, I guess, like New Yorker, or like a higher, I don't wanna say higher-minded, but like a, you know, I guess it's, it's hard to say what even a modern-day comparison to a magazine is, 'cause I don't know how many magazines people still read anymore. But, yeah, what, what emotions might the artist be trying to pull on here? Or what words might come to mind?
Two things for me polarizing, animosity and sympathy, depending on who the viewer is.
Yeah?
I'm thinking of introspection.
Yeah, what makes you say that?
Look to yourselves before you look at others.
Yeah. The word that always comes to my mind when I think of this is hypocrisy. And so, we can kind of, I'll, I guess I'll step back from the curtain a little bit. The lesson is completed. You've all done great, good job. And so, the way, to kind of give you a sense or a look behind the curtain, what I try to do with something like this is I, I try to kind of, I have a sense in my mind of where I want the conversation to go, and obviously the teachers, the history teachers in the department, we don't just pick, this is not a randomly chosen document, this is a very poignant and specific document. So, you know, it ties in with the essential question, and the teachers in the department are very good about guiding these kind of conversations to hear what students in the class might say. Now, if this were a bigger class with 20 or 30 students in it or something like that, what I might do instead is have a turn and talk. So, you know, instead of sharing out as a whole class, I give everybody a voice instead of, you know, raising hands or something like that. So, you turn to your neighbor and talk about it for yourself for a minute or two, something like that, to give everybody a chance to speak. But again, these are some of the ways you do that. Depending on the needs of the students in the class and the level that they're at and the way they wanna access it, they might not all be able to jump right to the, some of the conclusions and observations you made. And so, this kind of graphic organizer would be a way to kind of help students through that as they break down documents. Especially, this would be an early in the year document, so they would maybe have less experience looking at cartoons from this type of era, so that would be something to take them along. Additionally, this document, I think, is extremely relevant to look at for students, because anti-immigration sentiments are not new, and I think it is certainly a very modern question and open thing for students to talk about. And as they're high school students thinking about like, what are, I'm about to be a voting citizen, what is my place in this country? What are my values? You know, they're kind of starting to think outside of what maybe they've heard from at home, or what their friends say to start. We want to encourage them to think about like, what is your actual opinion on this? Not just what mom or dad said, or what a friend says, or what your group of friends say. Can you become an informed consumer of things like this? And so, we could specifically, specifically connect it to the time period of the 1920s, which we're studying now in our class, which there was a heavy anti-immigration law passed, where they reduced immigration to 3% of what it had previously been. So, and you can make connections, obviously, to modern day. Just in this most recent election cycle, a massive debate was made in the news about how to handle immigration. So, the modern topic of what to do for immigration in this country is an open-ended question. And obviously, it's our job as their history teachers to kind of make them informed citizens to make the decision for themselves, as opposed to just, you know, be listening to another talking head about how things should do. What are your values? What are your, what are your questions? So, this is one of my favorite documents to look at, and I think you could kind of put it up any day of the week, or depending on what's going on in the news. And it's, like you said, introspection is maybe a good way to think about this. Look, look in the mirror first before you cast dispersions or think about how you should make your policies. So, any questions about primary source analysis, or this specific document, or how other teachers might be doing stuff like this? It's not as fun as a math problem or anything like that, but this is a little bit of a sense inside the liberal arts in the school, so.
I have a question for you.
Yeah?
Are you finding that the students are more reliant on the graphic organizers than, like, thinking independently to write?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think depending on, of course, depending on the level of the student, right? Like, some students, this, you know, this is gonna be something that they're gonna need whenever they look at a document like this, and that's okay. Like, this, this doesn't make it, this doesn't give them the answers, it just kind of gives them that framework to look at and to kind of organize their thoughts for that. I think the, the goal for most, if not all, students is to use this at first and then start to ask themselves those questions. And so, I would use a document like this maybe once or twice early on in the year, and then I would expect that, okay, it's another political cartoon, we've kind of done this song and dance before, that they should be able to kind of start to do that on their own. And then, the teachers in the department and I, what we would do is basically, what are they showing us? What do we need to do? And we would match what we need to do with what they're showing us. So, if we're continuously working with cartoons and primary sources like this, and it's just not, they're not getting it, or they're not making the kind of conclusions we wanna do, then we obviously kind of need to take a look and reflect on what we can do to best support them for it. The goal is to get them all to be able to do this independently and, and ask themselves those questions, but everybody walks at a different pace, I guess, as we go. So, our job is to just support them with what, meet them where they are.
Thank you.
Good question, yeah. Okay, history lesson complete. So, what I'll do next is to kind of talk about the strategic plan and how our department work connects to this. Some of this we've talked about before tonight, and then some of it is a little bit new. So, I'm not gonna read all of it to you, but the, in the colored sections are the specific pieces of the strategic plan I've highlighted that we're working on. The first is inter-department, as well as working with the EL department to do better with our SEL practices. So, this is something a lot of departments are doing, and we're not unique in this. You know, there are English language and, English language learners in all of our classes, so this is something we are doing fairly regularly. So, that's a big part of meeting the strategic plan about meeting all students' needs and improving the curriculum for SEL students. In terms of vertical and horizontal alignment for the curriculum, we are and have for, I mean, gosh, as long as I've been department head, 10, 12 years now at this point, or, sorry, more than that. I'm getting older by the day, as the kids like to remind me when I make my pop culture references in class that just don't land anymore. Turns out, kids just don't watch good movies, I guess. But, anyway, so for departments, in the department, grade seven through 12, writing is something that we strive and provide opportunities to do that, and we've used rubrics and common teaching strategies so that the students are hearing the same thing from grade seven through 12 about, okay, this, this is what a thesis statement should look like. This is how you craft an argument, this is how you support your argument. And it's all about, we've made the commitment specifically to argumentative writing, it's all about crafting an argument, right? We'll leave the creative writing to other departments, and we've kind of chosen that for history, the thing that is most relevant for our curriculum is crafting and developing and supporting arguments. So, that's, that's what we focused on, seven through 12. And then additionally, from a business perspective, I've mentioned this in the past in these meetings, and it's something that we're very proud of and will continue to do with the town, and that's Credit for Life, for giving students practical knowledge to develop and, and support transferable skills beyond high school. So, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Credit for Life at this point, maybe even participated in the past. It's a great opportunity, I'll just kind of give a nickel tour for people that may not be familiar with it, but basically, the senior class goes to an off-site facility where community members and business members and business leaders in the community take them through a real-life investment and life expense situation. So, you'd be given a profile, and say you're a swim instructor at Goldfish Swim School, this is your salary, and here are your life goals, and then they would go and apply for a car loan, and they would get a, you know, go to talk to a travel agent about maybe planning a vacation, or maybe not, I guess, depending on what kind of budget they're working with. And so, they go through and kind of have to make these difficult adulting choices, as the kids would say in the, in these classes that they learn that. So, this ties in, it's an opportunity for all of our seniors to take advantage of. So, that fits in with our strategic plan. The next couple of slides are about AP data, so before I switch to that, I just wanted to give any space for questions about strategic plan or anything related to that.
I have one non-related question to the strategic plan, and I may have asked this before, so I apologize. How many research papers from ninth to 12th did the students end up writing before they graduate?
So, specifically, they would write minimum one, right? Minimum one research paper. Depending on the classes that they're taking, depending on the style of project that they're doing, they're having multiple research opportunities, but in terms of like a research paper, they would do at least one in their junior year, but that could become more, depending on, like, AP students will do multiple, 'cause they're all gonna do at least two with their, you know, if they take AP US and AP European History, they each do a research paper as part of that class. And then all of the classes do multiple research projects. So, that's different thing. Your specific question is about, you know, turning it into a research paper in a college-type expectation, but in terms of, here's an assignment where you have to do research, you know, apply the documents and the, the knowledge that you gain from that, that's multiple times a year in all of the core history classes, just not, the final product isn't necessarily an essay.
So, they're, they're getting all the skills across the board, and then all kids, at some point, from nine to 12, will have had experience writing at least one.
At least once, yeah.
And I, I know it's very complicated with AI and having to do most of the work in school, so.
Yeah, AI is interesting, you know, it's, it's obviously a relevant and important topic, especially in, in classes where you're doing writing. And we've kind of, as a department, talked about, you know, is this the kind of situation where whenever we do writing, should it all be live in ti-, you know, in class, so that AI isn't an opportunity to do that? We've tried that. I think there's pros and cons to doing that. Not every student thrives in a limited-time environment. There's something to be said for the editing process and writing in general, which you don't necessarily get in a timed setting. So, I've kind of swung a little bit back towards giving them some more time and space to do it at home. And the way I've kind of tried to frame it and the way we talk about it is, you know, you can get out of this class what you want to, you're gonna get out of it what you put into it, right? If you wanna let a robot do the work for you, right, then be prepared to accept the consequences later in life when you do a job that a robot will take from you, right? If you're not able and willing to engage in making your own creative thought and problem-solving, then those are skills you're gonna lack as an adult that will end up ultimately being your loss. And so, that will work for some kids, that doesn't work for every kid, but at the end of the day, not every kid's gonna be a history major. And I think there is also an appropriate use for AI in the classroom and in, in schools. And I'll give you an example. So, recently, I was doing a project where my students had to create an infomercial for a certain, they were like perfectionist communities from the 1800s in the Second Great Awakening, which is like super interesting. And so, they had to make an infomercial about it, you know, like Billy Mays and like those Sham Wow-style commercials for like, you know, communal living in the 1840s. And so, what I did was, I knew that there was a whole list of these types of communities, and there were some really obscure ones. And I could have spent 40 minutes digging through my books and jogging my memory and all this to make my list. Instead, I asked AI to make a list for me. And when it gave me that list, and it gave me like kind of a little summary of what these communities were, I put that in the assignment, gave them the prompt that I used to create it, and then acknowledged that this was created by AI, not me, and explained the reason why. And then, including the specific prompt, I think teaches them about how to do prompt engineering better, because that's really the future of AI, is not what it can do, it's what questions can you ask it to do for you? And that's a relevant skill. So, in terms of you, showing them how I would use this, I, the AI didn't come up with the infomercial piece and framing it and explaining that to me, that was my idea. And that's what made it fun for them, right? If I just wanted a list of things, the robot could do that for me. But, so it's, it's, am I getting it right 100% of the time? Is it perfect? Or is, are students using AI? I'm sure they are. But, it's, it's a challenge that, you know, it's not going away. So, we talk about it all the time as a department, and we try to use it as learning opportunities for the students of, you know, it's a little bit, it's cheating at the end of the day. If you put something that's not, wasn't created by your name, it's cheating. And so, we treat it as that, but whenever you cheated, we try to teach as, try to approach that as a teachable moment. So, great question, it's, you know, I don't wanna take up the whole meeting time tonight for, for that, but we could. Any other thoughts before I kind of break down the AP data for us?
I have a couple of questions, if I could. What are you seeing in terms of student changes over the last several years, both in terms of their interest of which aspects? Cause I know your curriculum and department spans a few different areas. Do you see changes in students' interest in topics, as well as their participation? Like, when you gave us that cartoon, I wondered, how many students actually speak up? Do they, are you getting the participation, or are your students, the kids who are always on their phone and struggle with social dynamics that would translate to the classroom?
So, I'll, there's a bunch of things to say. So, I'm gonna put the phone thing on hold, and we'll talk about that in a second, 'cause I, I have a very specific answer for that. That has not been an issue, and I'll explain why. In terms of participation, it depends on the class, right, and depends on the students. But by and large, with an assignment like that, or questions that I would typically pose to a group, I do, you know, kids are willing to engage. But again, we've kind of talked about as a department, how do we deal with kids that are either, you know, unwilling or unable to engage in those kind of settings, because those numbers have certainly not gone down of students that kind of fit into that category. It's that, raise your hand or reflect and put it into, you know, a notebook that we keep, or like a chat that goes into our Canvas page, or something like that. It's the turn and talk in a smaller setting with a neighbor as opposed to in front of the whole, maybe you're not willing to raise your hand in front of the whole class, but turning to somebody that you sit next to that you're more comfortable with and share with too, then. So, there's strategies that teachers use to kind of help students along in that. And again, it's, it's kind of up to us, and, and I trust the people in my department as much as I would trust anybody to work with, that we have great people, that they're gonna put kids in successful positions. So, again, it kind of falls down to what student, you know, meeting students where they are and what they need. So, I think to get at where the, the spirit or where your question is headed, we've certainly noticed a lot more social challenge or struggle or inability to engage in the typical type of classroom setting like you or I might have gone to, where like the expectation was that you raise your hand, or you stand up in front of the class and present, and, you know, that's just not gonna be reality for some of the kids. Now, some kids are all about it, it's like, I almost want them to put their hand down a little bit, you know, less, because they're taking up a little bit, you know, too much of the oxygen. So, you run the gamut, you really do, you know, and have teachers in the department that have 100, 130 kids in a year, you see it all, right, in terms of personality. Now, in terms of the cell phone thing, cell phones have been a non-issue, because the school-wide, I'm not sure if I'm the first or the second, or if it's come up at your meetings yet, but we have a high school no-cell phone policy, and it has been extremely effective. So, cell phones in class are not a thing this year. Last year, yes, a thing, a problematic thing. This year, they are not an issue. And because the, the faculty is, has been really dedicated to this, and, and we've kind of shown them that like, they all kind of thought like, oh, you know, whatever, give it two weeks and you guys will cave. And that hasn't happened, thanks to the, you know, the support of the administration for backing up teachers, the consistency of the teachers. It's, I mean, I, I can't think of another initiative that has been as successful as this in a short period of time for students. I mean, the, the only thing that I can think of, and because I've been around this long, is like, kids used to like actually smoke. is like kids used to like actually smoke cigarettes in school. And like we, we stopped that. That was like a major win. And then vaping came along and, you know, we lost there. But, you know, they don't use their cell phones anymore. So that's, that's great. I had a kid after school today for using their cellphone in class. So that's it. The expectation is the expectation. It's great. So I think, did I answer, you know, there were multiple elements of your question. I want to make sure I spoke to them all.
Yeah, the other piece is, are you seeing a change in what students want to enroll in? I know there's always scheduling issues with wanting electives. But are you seeing the pendulum swing in terms of more demand for certain areas?
Uh, I mean, I'm lucky in the sense that A, we're able to offer and staff the number of electives that we have. And as long as I've been doing this, history has been highly sought after for students. So it helps too that we run electives that are not just history-specific electives, like for example, you know, law and history versus Hollywood and psychology. These are traditional history classes. But the leadership seminar that we're able to run through the history department is, it has three sections of it running this year. So that's something that's been highly sought after for students as this goes on. And so I think providing this kind of diversity of classes, I can't speak to other departments, but in the history department, the interest is certainly there. We're, if anything, we're maybe short on a handful of electives. Like we probably didn't run one or two electives this year that we could have had we had more ability to staff those. So the demand is, if anything, growing, not going the other way, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, can I ask you a quick follow-up on something you said answering Melanie's question? When you mentioned how like the different ways of, like not everybody will get up and step and speak in front of the class, like introvert-extrovert type thing. Is that something that's part of when you're looking at the alternative grading? Like things like that coming into play too? I know it might have been about alternative ways of going about getting the same thing accomplished.
Yeah, I think they go hand in hand. It's, the grading piece is mostly, is primarily about, does the grade reflect what a student knows and is able to do, right? It's not necessarily about participation, you know. Again, we could have a debate about how participation should or shouldn't be graded.
Yeah.
You know, specifically for their, their scores and getting a grade for participation. But generally speaking, yeah, the goal is to get students to a point where, you know, what they're able to do is reflected in their grades. And so this scale is doing that where, you know, if they participate, it's only going to help them. So, yeah, is that answering your question?
Yeah, I guess with alternative grading and like, it's almost like it's alternative engaging, right? Kind of thing, like just different ways to, you know, I know it may not go towards a grade, but just different ways of making sure that staff has, knows that, not everybody may be receptive to the same type of, like putting out what they want to say.
I think the best example of this is what our world history teachers are doing this year. And at least once a term, students will do a project as opposed to a test for a chapter. And one of the projects that they would get would be, say the theme is religion. The project isn't just research Muhammad and tell me about Muhammad. It's pick a religion and do that. And so it allows the kind of students to say, well, I'm not interested in, you know, some of the major religions. I want to look at something that's a little more unique or something I'm not familiar with. And so they'll dive into that. And so it allows students that kind of freedom of choice to choose the way that they're going to engage with the skill. As long as they show me the skill, I don't care what content they do as long as it's within reason for what we're teaching. And that's the approach we've taken in the ninth-grade curriculum and all the teachers use for doing that, which is providing students with opportunities to kind of choose the way that they want to engage with the content by still doing the same skill that we think is important.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that's a better way to answer that question.
Yeah, thank you.
Of course. Anything else before we talk AP stuff?
I have one more question, sorry. Is there a debate club at the high school?
We don't currently have a debate club.
Okay.
I think personally, it would be great if we had one. And, you know, I think one of the main reasons is there hasn't necessarily been like a leading staff member or something like that. That's like, you know, if you build it, they will come kind of thing. I think if there would be a student, a portion of the student body that's interested in that. But I don't, I don't have any background in debating. And, you know, I think the, if a teacher was specifically interested in running something like that, then I think it would thrive. But we don't currently have one.
Thanks.
So AP data, this year we offered, or this past school year, we offered three AP classes instead of the two that we've traditionally offered. So I'll talk about AP US history, AP European history, and AP psychology. So the most recent data is at the top. And I think the trends to point out are that the average score increased. And then also the, the percentage gap between percent of our students earning a three or higher and then all of students earning three or higher was reduced. So if you look last year, it was about a 20-point gap between the students earning a three at our school versus students globally earning a three. And in the most previous iteration of the test, it was down to like nine-ish percentage points, the gap. So that's always something that we would look to try to close is to get our students as close to or above what the global community is doing. So that's a trend that we noticed there. The class size was a little bit down last year, 11 students versus 25 the last handful of years. This year, we're at 15 students in the class. So we'll see how the students do this year. In terms of AP European history data, we've got the last three years to look at. But four students took the exam last year out of the class that they had. All of them earned a three or higher, and which is as good as you can get in terms of earning a three or higher. A three being the standard threshold to earn college credit at a university that accepts them. And so that's our AP Euro data. And then I'll go, feel free, if you have questions about any of the exams, I'd be happy to go back. But this is our data from our AP Psych exam last year. And so you can see 16 students took the exam. And the averages, you can kind of see where they're at there for our first year offering the class. I, this data, obviously, there's room for improvement in all of these areas, and we never strive to just settle for where we're at. We want to try to get better each year. But for the first year offering this class, I'm satisfied with these results. It's a good place to build on and go from there. So we have a good group, good group of 20 or so students taking AP Psychology this year. We'll see how many of them choose to take the exam. And I'll have more data for you next year, obviously, as we look to build on this program. AP questions for you? Or do you have any AP questions for me, rather?
Well, I guess I did have questions, but then I realized that our, what we have here only goes up to 2023 for a push.
Yeah, I gave you, this slide was not updated in the presentation that I gave you.
No, so this is, this is good to see. Did you, did you up the pacing?
I changed the outlay of the class. So instead of the thematic approach that we'd take, that we'd use the last handful of years, I taught it in a strictly chronological order. And we're doing that again this year, so.
And have you submitted feedback from any of the students who have taken the AP classes to find out where you can maybe finagle things?
Yeah, the, that's great. We always, I always kind of talk to the students immediately, like what's their first impression? And we all kind of do that in our classes and break it down afterwards. The unfortunate thing is they don't get the actual score or result until July. So it's, we can only go based on how they feel they did. It's, you know, and sometimes the way they felt they did might not be, match up with what the actual performance was. But generally speaking, the things that students report is the timing is not an issue. So like they don't feel like they have to rush or that there, there's not like, they're not getting questions wrong because they left them blank or ran out of time. So generally speaking, that's not an issue that we report. And so really what it comes down to is, and I think where we saw the score increases was, you know, the emphasis on the writing, right? And doing that writing. And you can see, I think, the reason why the scores go up dramatically in Euro from US is this is the first time that they're kind of writing to the rubric. The rubric is the same for AP Euro when they do it the next year. And so it's the second year of kind of doing those types of prompts, writing to that style of rubric, doing the timed things. And frankly, the AP Euro teacher is incredible as well, so that helps. But, yeah, so the, in terms of soliciting their feedback, we kind of talk about like what they think went well and what was easy or hard for them. And a lot of it really comes down to kind of like the crap shoot of which essay questions and which prompts they're getting for how they feel about it. It's like, oh, well, we spent a lot of time on this and it didn't come up at all. Or, you know, we, you know, sometimes they're like, this was great. We did a ton on imperialism at the end of the 1800s. And there was, there was an essay question about it. So sometimes it's luck of the draw. But one of the big glaring feedbacks from students that I've used to kind of apply to my instruction is they had a really hard time putting events on the calendar or putting the events from the calendar on the timeline. And that's why I'm now teaching the class strictly chronologically as opposed to thematically. A lot of the kids liked doing the class thematically because they could take a topic like race and follow, you know, how slavery impacted and how, you know, the struggles post-slavery impacted the country and over the span of a month and do that all together. And they really liked that. But the problem they were having is when it came to six months later, when they have to take the exam, it's like, well, did the 13th Amendment come before or after the Jim Crow laws? And so they really kind of struggle with the timeline. And so this way, by just doing it strictly chronologically, it's, everything's in order. Everything's needing, you make those thematic connections along the way as you can, but focusing on, you know, putting things in order. And I think that's helped in terms of like the multiple choice, just kind of the basic fact monster that the multiple choice section is.
Is there anything to take out of 60% less students taking the tests than last year?
That kind of ebbs and flows. I wish I could give you kind of a good reason why. I think what typically, this is anecdotal. This is just my spidey sense. There's no data to back this up. What I think kind of happens is when you see smaller numbers, those students tend to report out that the class is fun, the class is easy because it's, they're like the most motivated to do it. And then more kids are like, oh, I want to take it. And then more kids take it, and they're like, ooh, this is not as fun. Like that kid was like really into history. I'm not, maybe I shouldn't have been listening to his advice. And then they get the word of like, oh, this class is hard, this class isn't as fun. And then the numbers kind of go down.
Got you.
So you kind of do see, like, if we put out more than five years worth of data, you would see that.
Okay.
It does that.
That's good to know, thank you.
I mean, just the year before 2020, the one that just dropped off, that's still on your sheet that you have, we didn't even run the class. We didn't have enough kids that were interested. So, and there were some like all-star students in that class, just not enough interested in taking it. So it does ebb and flow. And you can see too, like with the Europe, there are more kids taking the class than four or six. They have the option to, to take or to not take the AP exam. So some students elect, you know, by May of their senior year, they're not going on to study history. It's like, well, I'd rather not take this exam.
I got it. Right, I know, thank you.
Well, and I, I know from personal experience, I know kids who wanted to take the class but were already taking other APs based on what they were hoping to study in college. And to add another AP on top of that was just going to be too much.
That's a great point. Yep.
It's Thanksgiving week. Can you carry gratitude back to your department? I know that there are some members there who really just inspire, just from conversations I've heard. It's hard to make history come to life for, you know, middle school, high school kids. And you have some people back there who are doing phenomenal work. So thank you.
Thank you. Certainly we'll pass that along, yeah. That's why we do it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Enjoy your Thanksgiving. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm going to do it from here. As we get back on the slideshow.
Yeah, no problem.
My assistant, Mr. Bykowski is helping out.
Should you do Plan One or do you have an Abington Innovates one?
It's the same one. Yeah. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Bykowski. So we're a little less than a month after Abington Innovates took place. Good evening, everyone, by the way. These are just some highlights of how it went. Feedback from staff who were there that day was very positive. And 39 to 44-ish, I think, staff members completed our online survey afterwards. And so these are some of the pieces of feedback that were provided by staff members. So you remember it was Election Day, November 5th. Abington Innovates, again, is where teachers get to choose professional development sessions that are of interest to them or based on their needs over three one-hour sessions. We offered about 40 different sessions, and 32 of those ran with more than three participants in each one. If there was less than three, we didn't run the session. Of the presenters, 19 were our own Abington Public School staff. We had four of our external presenters coming from outside organizations, and nine of our administrators presented sessions. All of the administrators here tonight presented. So thank you for sharing your expertise with our staff. And on the survey, in addition to the comments that people were able to share at the end, there were very targeted questions about what they're looking for next year and what they liked about their sessions or what they didn't like. And there was an overall rating that they could give on a scale of one to five. And the average rating from the 40-ish people who responded was a 4.6 out of five. So that's pretty good. Does anybody have any questions about Abington Innovates this year?
I do. It's just a thought, but looking at the form and knowing that some of this was done in-house, would there ever be a way to roll some of these sessions out to maybe our parents? Because I know that there were some of these topics that were hugely interesting that I would love to have gone to and that I think other parents could maybe get some information from that. We might be able to find a way to do something similar for our parents down the road to invite them and to hear from the professionals that we have in our district.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I would love to look into that.
Okay.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, too, our, we have a lot of people who coach and otherwise lead our students outside of this school day. And I think some of these topics could also be very beneficial to the other adults who have non-household members that they're mentors to.
Great, thank you.
I just thank you, like you said, Chris. Thank you to everybody who participated. Usually, I heard from some staff members how great it was too. So thank you for doing that. And I'm glad, I'm glad you said like there was also comments and question about what they're looking for next year, so those things to help build as well, so.
Great.
Yeah.
I just want to thank Chris, and I especially want to thank the 28 staff members in Abington that shared their expertise. It's great to be in a room and listening to people who wouldn't necessarily be sharing, sharing their expertise. So I want to thank those people specifically. And truly to see the excitement of our faculty and in this building that morning, running between their sessions, talking about what they were learning. It was, it was a very great day. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Basta.
Thank you.
So I have to backtrack. There was, so tonight was our public hearing on school choice participation. I am not breaking any rules because it's 6:30 PM or later, it can be held. So I do apologize, I just missed that at the beginning. So I don't know if it's going to matter, but for formatting, I'm just going to open it, open up a public hearing for school choice participation. And without any residence here, I'm going to close the public hearing. But I would ask Dr. Michelle to, because then we're going to go right into where we'll make our decision on school choice for next year. So I'll just ask Dr. Michelle to present some facts about it for us.
Sure, thank you. In Massachusetts, every school district is a school choice school district, which means you allow students from other districts to come into your district unless you opt out of school choice. So it is a yearly requirement of school committees to either opt out of school choice or become a school choice district. We had an opportunity for public, public comment, which is also one of the requirements. And my recommendation at the end of giving a couple of facts around our enrollment will be to not opt into school choice or to, or vote to opt out of school choice. We currently have a pretty steady enrollment in our district. We haven't seen big spikes or dips like some districts have seen. As you know, or you may remember, when we opened this building, we saw for three, four, or five years, a steady increase in enrollment. four, or five years, a steady increase in enrollment. Uh, that has leveled off. The, um, we get a, uh, enrollment report every year, uh, that has shown that we anticipate our enrollment to stay pretty steady. And if our enrollment continues to be pretty steady or stagnant in terms of, um, increases or decreases, then our classrooms are full, they're not stuffed. So we're not at a place that we need to add portable classrooms. But we are at a place that if we added five, eight, 10 students at a particular grade level, we would have to add another teacher. So we're at a place right now that, um, our elementary classrooms are in the low twenties. As we move up through the grades, they move to a mid twenties, mid plus twenties. And therefore adding any number of students could tip us to a place that we would have to add staff. And the purpose of school choice, um, at least for Abington, if we were to consider, would be to help offset the costs of educating our students not to have to add staff because then it wouldn't be cost effective. And we don't have room. So right now, although our classrooms, um, our classrooms are at a pretty good number, uh, they, lower class sizes is always, um, better, uh, but we wouldn't even have space to add additional classrooms. So my recommendation to the committee, uh, would to vote to opt out of school choice for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Michelle?
If I could just clarify, um, if we opt, if we don't opt out, by nature of being opted in, you can not opt out by grade, and, but then you have to carry the student, like we could say, we'll allow fifth graders to come in, but then you have to carry those same students all the way through graduation. So even if we have a little bit of a dip in enrollment in a current grade, it doesn't mean that next year we're not going to have, I think one year, my daughter's class size grew by 20 some odd students over the summer. So in one year, yeah.
Once a student is enrolled in a district as a school choice student, they have the opportunity to continue until graduation. So you, like, to your point, you could say our second grade, our, um, our kindergarten this year is a little bit lower, so we'll allow kindergarteners. But if next year we got 20 new kindergarteners, we couldn't then say, oh, sorry, school choice, you need to go back to your sending district. Once they're in, they're in.
That part was my one clarification, so thank you.
And we haven't had any, we haven't since the school, since this building opened, we have not been school choice, correct?
We have not opted in. We had a few students that were continuing because we were school choice for a few years at specific grades. So those students were allowed to fit.
They were grandfathered in.
Yep.
Felicia, does, um, that, school choice have to do with anything with out-of-district students?
It is.
It's.
And their placement.
Special education out of district?
Either special education or if we find that a student would be a better fit in a different district.
So there are situations that, uh, there's definitely Abington students that school choice to other districts. There's Abington students that go to a number of our surrounding communities because they are school choice districts. I know for, for example, Rockland is a school choice district, Whitman Hansen. So we have students from Abington that choose to not go to the Abington Public Schools and then they go in school choice out. We also have situations where we have students in Abington who would benefit from a program in another district and a special education student. So we would pay that district, for example, for our students to go to a specialized program. We also have a couple of students that actually come to Abington High School for specialized programs and pay tuition. But that's separate than school choice. Those are very specific special education students that Dr. Robbins is very involved in, them coming from other districts, because we have a program that it, in different years have availability of one or two spots that doesn't create a need to have additional staff.
Thank you. Sure.
So I'll be either looking for a motion to opt out of school choice for the 25, 26 school year or nothing, which means we will be in.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor of opting out of the 25, 26 school year as a school choice pro, as a school choice program? Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Over our, during our last meeting, uh, and a number of meetings prior to that, we talked about our strategic plan and the strategic plan that was developed this spring with number of stakeholders across, uh, our Abington community, uh, to work together to come up with a strategic plan that will lead our district for the next five years. Unless there are questions on the background and the, um, the kind of how this is being built, I'd like to jump right into our, uh, last two strategic, uh, objectives. Last meeting, we talked about teaching and learning and culture and inclusion. And tonight we have communication and district operations. And if you remember, the cycle will be, will present in the fall, what we did the previous year and what our goals will be for the year moving forward. So tonight we'll hear about where, because it's new, it won't be a history, but there'll be a where we're going forward. So first up, we have, are there any questions on that? Okay. First up, we have district operations.
Unless you guys switched them in the packet, communications is first in the packet.
Great. Communication will be first, which will be Andy Robinson, uh, Director of the Abington, um, Education Program and Rich Baikowski, uh, the Director of Technology.
I'm just going to give us, uh. Give a lead in to our, uh, communication strategic objective. Communication obviously is a huge, um, portion of any, um, any organization, schools included. Um, and we want to make sure that that was something that we really put a lot of attention to, um, moving forward in our strategic plan. So our objective is really to look at, um, enhancing the consistent, uh, centralized systems, looking at the, the how, the who, the when, the what are we communicating to our families as well as improving our, um, communications within our schools. So in, in, in between grades within schools and in, and between schools, um, across the district. Looking at that, moving forward for this year, we're looking at our, uh, strategic initiative. The first one is looking at updating, um, our centralized systems and practices for that homeschool communication. So looking at how are we going to see what we have, what's in place and how are we going to move forward with that? And then in terms of implementation, we'll be looking at, as an administrative team, um, working to refine, we'll gather the information on where we're at. And then we'll talk about refining, um, what those communication practices are and, um, how we're going to, um, move our communication forward as a district.
Mr. Baikowski is going to go into our action plan.
Hello, everybody. So on this slide, um, the first item is to select a, um, a comprehensive communication system for the district, which I am happy to announce that we have done. Most of you are probably familiar with the fact that we use a program to send text messages and emails now. That's called Thrill Share. So as a district, we tried a couple of different things out, spoke to vendors, talked to neighboring districts, and we settled on Thrill Share as the option that worked best for us. We've already been using it. We're, we're happy with the initial results. And so that step is actually completed. We are still building it out. We, we've decided what we want, but we're building out the two-way communication part of that. You're probably familiar with Remind or Class Dojo or something of that nature. Thrill Share has a platform to do that type of communication as well. So we'll be rolling that out in the spring as a pilot and with the intent of having that, um, fully implemented for next school year. And then Thrill Share also has a, uh, sort of constant contact functionality. And we're trying to determine whether we would use that and maybe move away from, from using constant contact. But that's not totally determined yet, but it is an option for us. And we think the benefits of consolidating communications, so families and staff aren't wondering, do I send this through Aspen? Do I send an email? Should I call home? What should I do? You know, having a centralized system can help us be a little bit more effective in our communication. Next is assessment of the current practices. So as an admin team, we have been working on this. We, we basically have put together some documentation to determine how is Woodsdale sending a newsletter home? How is the high school sending an emergency message home? And making sure that we've sort of standardized our practices. So it's not the middle school sending something home one way and Beaver Book doing it a different way. So that families can really understand, okay, this is how things are coming. There's consistency to the communication. So we, this is an ongoing process. We've spent some time on that now and we're, we're kind of ironing that out, uh, for the district. Next is to establish communication protocols. So we're, we're also working on that as an admin team and then we'll be rolling that out with staff as well to get input. And the point of that is to sort of cut, use that platform, use Thrill Share in a consistent way that families can expect and understand when they will get communications. There are plenty of staff that currently send home newsletters or send home, these are really cool things we're doing in the classrooms, but there's not really a cadence to that necessarily. And so with a platform where we can kind of build it and make it look standardized, we, we want to make a, a system and a functionality where again, families and staff will know, okay, at the middle school on Thursdays, once a month, we send something home that, you know, just lets family know what, families know what's going on. And that way, you know, our entire community can really get a little bit more of an insight into the good things that are happening here at Abington. And then the training and support part, that is, um, falls to my department to make sure everyone knows how to use this platform. So so far we've, we've sent out and we've done the training for administrative team and for like front office staff so that they understand how to send text messages home. They know how to send emails home through Thrill Share. As we roll out the two-way communication, that will be a whole nother set of training that will be done for staff members. So they'll understand how that works. And there'll be a family piece of that too. Because families will need to know, oh, this is how I go to do these communications. This is how this works. And also to sort of understand and expect when those communications will come. And so this is a plug too. We have an app. There are a number of people who have installed that app, but I would ask people who are watching at home, if you would please, you can go to abingtonpublicschools.org or abingtonps.org. If you scroll to the bottom of the homepage, you can see the links to download the apps for your specific iOS or Android device. And that is the platform that will be used for that two-way communication. So the more people that are on there, the easier it'll be for us to roll it out. And again, uh, training will be done for families. Information will go out to let them know how all that works. Are there any questions about the communication section of the strategic plan?
May I ask a question or maybe ask, set you up?
Okay.
The others, uh, the multiple languages by using those platforms?
So I didn't mention that. Right. So part of this, when you're communicating through a platform like this, it, it uses the robot voice to make phone calls home and it, it sends texts and it sends emails. But part of the benefit of using a platform like that is it does translation automatically. So, um, when a family enrolls in Abington, they, they let us know what their home language is and that is entered into our systems and that is transferred to Thrill Share. And so when Jonathan Bourne sends an email home, the system recognizes whose family speaks Portuguese, whose family speaks Spanish and so on. And those communications go out to those families in those languages automatically without the person that's creating the message, Jonathan Bourne in this case, doing the translation on their own. So that's a huge benefit because it, it meets the families where they are. They don't have to do the translation on their end either. They don't receive a call in a language that they don't know. So that's a huge benefit for us and part of why we adopted a program like this. Thank you.
So, um, if we were to have a weather, no school call, it won't be my voice, it'll be the computer voice.
Yes.
Because it gets interpreted out.
Correct.
Oh, come on, Mia.
I know. I've been try, I've been working on it and so.
Can I just say, I think back in the day, one of the things that some of us requested was better communication, more transparency, more timely communication. The progress that I have seen just in the time that my kids have gone through school here, and I know it's for, there's been a huge amount of work from you and your crew and everything else. And the amount I've learned how to use what was already available through say Vicky and other people, it's, um, and through teachers too, like knowing what was available. So you have all done a tremendous amount. I'd say we're kind of on top of people being able to find things in a timely manner. Sometimes timely is hard because it, people need to take a minute and think about what they're hearing or let things come to, come to pass. And we do ask that, you know, if, if we are communicating in a timely manner, we also ask people to take a pause and take a minute and let us work through things also in a timely manner so that we can get the best updated, correct information. But thank you to your department because it has come above and beyond what we ever expected when we first made these asks.
Thank you.
Rich, I have two comments and one question. The question may be for Dr. Michelle in the end. First comment is obviously this system got tested a lot at the beginning of the school year. So thank you very much for working. Heidi had me set up the second comment where time, the definition of timely is different by a lot of people, but I think everything we've sent out has been timely by standard definitions of it. The question I have is what makes the determination of something being sent through Thrill Share or constant contact? Um, and like, is that a building decision? Is that your decision or like, is there certain things that if they're for the whole, like the notice of this meeting, right? Is that how that like stuff gets decided or?
So we've, um, so thank you. That is something that we've worked on and continue to work through are those protocols. So is the message a community message? Is it a school-specific message? Is it a parent-specific message? So there are times that we, we think how, what's, what is the purpose of this message? The purpose of this message is that this, so who does that go to? And so I, I would also say we're not perfect. Uh, it's a, there's a lot of new platforms and we, we are collaborating with each other each time. There are things that do automatically, um, youth basketball signup, constant contact. But if there's a, a parent night at the high school, only the high school parents need to know that.
Yeah.
Kind of what, what I've often said is, does grandma and grandpa need to know this? If they do, it goes out constant contact. If they don't, it can stay and go to the parents.
Are newsletters going that? Cause I feel like newsletters still come constant contact.
They do still come constant. And part of that, I think is because that's how they've always been sent. And so some of the information is community information.
Yeah.
And that may shift.
Okay.
Uh, as we, as we move through this, but it would also be, we would want that to be consistent.
Yep.
All the schools through one way or the other.
Okay.
The last thing in Chris, sorry, may I?
Yeah.
Is, is about timeliness of messages. And I've, um, said this each time, we've sent out a text message regarding an emergency in one of our buildings and we try to get that message out as soon as we can. But we also need to remember that the safety of our students and staff is what's most important. So sometimes it may take a little longer while we're trying to figure out what the emergency is. So just know that we have a communication protocol within our organization and we also have people that are assigned to be communicators and, um, kind of press people. But we do try to get those messages out, but the safety of our students and staff is really number one, and then communication is number two.
Thank you.
We have a couple.
Yeah.
Comments, questions. Him, go ahead.
Oh, um, if someone is not currently getting the text messages, where should they sign up or how?
So there's two, there's two things to, to note with that. So you can go into Aspen, you can log in with your Aspen family portal account. And by using, and by, when you go in there, you can look at your information, make sure it's correct. Uh, you want to make sure that your primary number is the one that is receiving the text messages. Like you want to make sure that that's not a landline, for example. You want that to be your cell phone. So you can go into Aspen, you can update that on your own. If you can't log into Aspen or if you go into Aspen and everything looks correct, you can go to the abingtonps.org website and open up a technology ticket. You do that on the main site and you click technology resources and then there's a link for help desk. And you can put in a ticket and that comes to my department and we'll figure it out. We've already done that for a couple of folks who said, you know, I think my information's correct. And we sorted that out, you know, to make. you know, to make sure that the numbers were accurate. So those are the two things, you can do it on your own, but if you can't log in and you can't sort it on your own, you can put in a ticket, and we'll help you sort that out. Either getting you logged into Aspen or figuring out what the disconnect is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, first question is students. Is any of our communication directed at students, or is it primarily the adults in the households?
Thrill Share does give us the opportunity, but we haven't really done a ton of communication through these systems with students. Most of the time, if there's a message that's going to students, it's just going directly to their emails, I think, you know, as long as it's age-appropriate, you know, the high school. All the way, actually, all the way through, there are class of whatever year they graduate, and so those lists get used quite a bit to get information out to, to students. There is an opportunity, as I mentioned, to use Thrill Share to do some communication with that. I don't know that we're gonna roll that out right away, because it's not something we've done in the past, but it does exist. Just have to see whether or not we're successfully doing what we need to do as far as communication now. I haven't heard any complaints. But as of right now, it's mostly done through those email lists.
Okay, great. One, it, one thing that I find painful is absences at each building. I never really know, and I sit here on school committee, and I still struggle with who am I supposed to email and who am I sharing with? Is there an opportunity with Thrill Share to centralize what you do when your student's going to be either late or absent?
It's a good question. I don't know for sure, because the way the rooms' communication is set up, I know that even from suggestions with, speaking with the company, they, they don't suggest that you do timely communications like that through the system, because someone needs to know that your student is absent as soon as possible, you know, and, and someone may not be looking at that feed as opposed to the process that's in place where someone calls and leaves a message, and, and the secretary who's in charge of that, you know, checks that message. So I, I see what you're saying, especially, you know, if you happen to have kids across different schools, you know, you're making three phone calls because your family all has a stomach bug or something like that, can't go in. But as of this minute, I don't think that Thrill Share has an option for that, but it's something that, you know, we can take a look at and see if there's something that we can do that would make that process a little bit less painful.
Just curious. I mean, you could also then run the rest of students going out through Thrill Share, pretending they're me and saying that they're homesick when that high school student is not homesick.
Right.
So I can see...
And I do know that high school clarified their procedure in a nice little thing this year, so...
So when I get to the high school, I'll be there. I emailed the office of one building and the nurse of the other building for one kid accidentally, so I still fail at it. My last question is a calendar of all community-wide events. So I recently found that Arbiter has the high school, including non-sports-related items, calendar. Do we have anything as a district that shows full district out beyond the walls of just APS, so that the deadline for youth basketball is on there? Do we have anything like that as a town, does anyone know?
Not that I know of. I think Arbiter is sort of required by the MAIAA at this point, so that's why we're using that for, for sports. And then our website, which is also part of Thrill Share, I know that Eileen, who does our website updates, tries to put as many events that are school-specific as possible on there so that you can see it on the website as well. But I don't think that the town has any sort of, like, global calendar that would include those outsider, outside things.
Okay.
Can I ask, since you brought up the Aspen Family Portal, I know you put it out at the beginning of every school year.
Yep.
How hard would that be to open that up again for people to update if they needed to before inclement weather hits?
It's always open. So as long as you can log into the system, you can update it, even if you updated it today, and then your cellphone fell in the ocean, you need to get a new number the next day, you could still go in there and you could, and you make changes anytime you want.
Don't drop your cellphones in the ocean.
Correct.
Yes. All right, so that people can go ahead and change that right now?
Yep, anytime.
And if they don't remember how to get into their family portal, they just open a Help Desk ticket?
Yep, and we can reset it. Or there's also, if, in that same Technology Resources section of the website, there are directions on how to use the family portal. So if they've never logged in, but they have the email that includes the information, there are directions there to, you know, walk you through the steps to log in, set up a question to reset your password, and how to update your information. It's all there.
Awesome, thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Annie.
And our last, our last area is district operations, overseen by Sarah Gany, Director of Finance and Operations, and Julie Thompson, the Principal of Beaverbrook Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, Julie Thompson, Principal of the Beaverbrook Elementary School, and I will be discussing the district operation strategic objective from our strategic plan. This objective is to ensure that facilities and district operations provide high-quality, safe teaching and learning operations for all students, staff, and families. The initiative for this year is to maintain innovative and physically safe schools by implementing best practices, best practices and preventative measures. At its core, this initiative focuses on the physical safety of students, staff, and faculty of Abington Public Schools, as well as the evaluation and planning of our aging elementary school buildings. Next, Julie will talk about our action steps for this initiative.
Good evening. As Sarah had mentioned, we have two action steps for this, this initiative. One of them is ensuring emergency preparedness. We're committed to the safety of our students and staff. We conduct regular training sessions and drills, as you know. Every new hire in our schools, in our schools undergoes Alice Protocol training as part of their onboarding process, ensuring that every member of our team is equipped to respond from the very beginning of their employment. After each drill or real emergency, we continue to review the, our actions taken and the results achieved, and we include always collaborating with town departments and our local authorities. And often from those conversations, we're pinpointing any improvements that we could make and any, and strengthen our safety measures in any way. Our second, second action step is infrastructure assessment for enhanced safety. At Woodsdale and Beaverbrook Elementary Schools, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, and our Director of Maintenance will evaluate the physical infrastructure. And this assessment will guide critical decisions about repairs, upgrades, or the need for possible replacement to enhance safety and functionality in our elementary schools. And through these comprehensive action steps, we reaffirm our dedication to providing secure and prepared environment for everyone in our school community. Any questions?
Julie, much like I said before, some of these have already had to be put into play this year a couple of times, so that's good to see. Is, so has, I guess, it may be a question for anybody who's been a part of the, what's gonna be number three on here for like admin team and town departments. And I'm guessing that's probably, there's been some of those meetings that have happened after some things. Is there anything, is, is that a new thing, meeting with the different departments throughout town to be? I know there's a new police chief, for example, so there's new fire chief. Just like how that's going along, what you're, what's being learned from those meetings that can, I know some of it might be sensitive, so obviously, but whatever can be shared.
I'd be happy to give an overview. So over the last number of years, we have been lucky to partner with our Police Department, Fire Department, and Building Department in particular around our building safety. We've done comprehensive walkthroughs with the leaders of those departments to, to identify infrastructure issues or changes that we may want to consider. And, and I can report that the officials, town officials, have been impressed with our protocols and our safety plans. We do have a new, relatively new fire chief and a new police chief, and we have had the opportunity, after our different instances, instances this year, incidences this year, to have post-incident conversations. And, and really going both ways, from an educational perspective, what we, what we saw, and from a police or fire perspective, what they saw. So that has been very, very valuable, and, and I really appreciate, and I know we'll continue to have the relationship with Police, Fire, and the Building Inspector around those things.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I know that you said new teachers get training through the onboarding process. What about, like, new paraprofessionals or new tutors? Do they receive the same training?
Yes, they do.
Every, every employee, new employee of the Abington Public Schools, every single new employee, as they are doing their paperwork, also watch a link of a number of administrators providing an Alice training that we did a couple of years ago for our faculty and staff. So they watch exactly what our faculty and staff have watched. You know, they don't have the hands-on experience yet as a new employee, but we, that's why we do do drills, but they get all the same information.
That includes substitutes.
And substitutes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, you're back up again.
All right, so tonight, we have the FY25 budget allocation. So as we do each year, now that our hiring is complete and we have a gauge on our salary and expense accounts, we come to school committee tonight to vote on the initial budget allocation for the year. With our salary account at $23,918,180, and our expense account at $6,881,824,000. No, nope. I'm gonna say that again. And our expense account at $6,881,881,000, no. I knew this was gonna happen. Did I not say this? And our expense account at $6,800,000.
Nope.
Nope.
I got it.
Nope.
Let me try it?
No, I don't. Our expense account at $6,800,000, no. Yes.
$881,000.
Why can't I say it?
Because now you got it in your head. It's all good.
$6,800,000, no. $881,000, $824,000. I knew that was gonna happen. I did it. So, and as, as normal, any adjustments that need to be made in June will, we will present.
And Sarah, just, I think I ask this all the time. Just, this is the, so this is the budget that was already voted on last April for this current, current school year we're in right now.
Yes.
Which is allocated and just splitting it up into two different things.
Yes, just, yep.
Any questions?
Yep.
And there are no impending expenses? Salary tends to be more stable, but expenses, unforeseen expenses, that we might have to deal with, or are we good?
Not at this time, no, not at this time.
We readjust at the end of the fiscal year if we have to, so... I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 salary and expense allocation as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set, Sarah?
Thank you.
Up next, so established our next school committee meeting. It will be Tuesday, January 7, 2025, at 6:30 PM. That will also be the budget hearing. Will start at 6:30 PM, I won't mess that up this time. So just some dates to remember. Tomorrow's an early release for everybody. There's also no lunch served everywhere, right? There's no lunch served everywhere, okay. Thursday, November 28th, Friday, November 29th, no school Thanksgiving break. Football game against Whitman Hansen. Thursday morning at 10:00 AM at Memorial Field. December 10th, CPAC Basic Rights Workshop at 6:30 here in the library. December 11th is an in-service early release date. And then holiday break will be from Monday, December 23rd through, I think it's Wednesday, January 1st, 2025. We are going to go into executive session, but be, go ahead.
Can I mention one?
Yeah, yes, of course.
That junior class auction
Oh, yeah.
is on December 5th, Thursday, December 5th, at 6:00 PM at the middle school cafeteria, $5 to get in and get your auction number, cash or check preferred. You need to pay $5 to bid, but it doesn't have to be per person, just per bidder.
Thank you.
It looks like they have some amazing...
They have some really good things. Thank you.
And you don't have to be the parent of a senior to go. This is open to the entire...
Junior, parent of junior.
I mean, junior, oh, sorry. Yeah, junior, it's, it's open to the community.
Yep.
Come buy some amazing prizes.
So we're gonna do this again. So by roll call vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, for the purpose of conducting strategy session for negotiations with the Abington Education Association, Units A and B, and non-union personnel, since, as declared by me, to hold this discussion, open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and not to return to regular session. I'll be looking for a yes from everybody to enter executive session and not return to, to open session.
Yes.
A yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Happy holidays to everybody, since we won't be back until January, and hope you have a great night.
Thank you.